Okay, then I call to order the regular October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Minuteman School Committee Meeting. My gavel. Uh, school committee members, remember, we are remote, which means that all votes are roll call votes in order by town. I think we're all here, so won't be any gaps. So the first thing I would like is a motion to adopt remote participation as written in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? Very well, roll call vote was starting with PM as usual.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah? Okay, Sarah is. Is she?
Where's Sarah?
Sarah, you're muted.
Yep, okay, I'll set Sarah.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Good.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Eve is muted. It's gonna take a minute for Julia to push all the buttons. AM is free.
Has Steve answered?
Uh, Steve is, no, he's still muted.
I'll set Steve.
There you go. Oh, he remuted. He was unmuted. Good.
I didn't do anything, I swear to God. Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas, yes.
Okay, very good. Um, I do have two public comments that as our policy in a remote meeting, public comments are sent, um, in this case, they went through Julia to the chair and the chair reads the comments during the meeting. So here we go now. If I, I'm gonna mention the names and then the comment, I'm gonna read the comment. I apologize in advance if I uh get any of the names, if I pronounce them improperly, okay? The first comment is from Erin Bordeaux, visual arts educator. Minuteman has been a huge part of my life for over fifteen years. As a Minuteman mother, daughter, wife, teacher, friend, and colleague, I've had the privilege of experiencing Minuteman from many different points of view. Each year has had its own challenges, but the core of Minuteman has always been rooted deeply in our sense of community and caring for each other. The events of the past year did nothing but reestablish just how strong that core is. Those same events did however damage whatever trust existed between the school committee and much of our community. Rebuilding that trust begins with the members of this body committing to a transparent and inclusive process that involves all stakeholders and hiring a superintendent, who is committed to working with us to continue to provide the incredible education that Minuteman is known for. Thank you again, Erin Bordeaux. Okay? That was the first comment. The second comment is from the following four people. Peter Kelleher, MFA President, Mike McQuilkin, Vice President, Danielle Tagg, Secretary, Mike Gurano, Guarino, sorry, Treasurer. And it is titled to be read for public comment on October tenth. Here's the comment. On May first, the MFA members voted no confidence in the superintendent. All ninety members voted unanimously by ballot. In nine short months, the Minuteman community was torn apart. The Minuteman name was desecrated. Everything that we had worked for was gone. Now we left to pick up the pieces, changing everybody's viewpoint to back, back to the way we had it. To say that your response to all of this is disappointing, almost like it is a joke. You knew about these issues in September of last year in an executive session meeting, and you swept it under the rug to save the school committee's dignity. And you did nothing. Countless meetings with the MFA E-Board, you did nothing. Countless grievances, you did nothing. Students boycotting school, parents standing outside the building, news reporters asking for information, helicopters flying above, and yet you still did nothing. No one has taken ownership in the disaster of the year that we just had, and yet you praise each other in your statement to the Minuteman community last week. You talk about how tirelessly the school committee members worked, that they gave up vacations and drove for hours to ten meetings, yet no one has taken ownership. To praise Dawson is ridiculous and embarrassing for the faculty, staff, students, parents, and the entire Minuteman community. We are still disheartened. I hope that going forward with the next search, the MFA has a larger stance in the superintendent's search. After all, it is up to us to pick up the pieces of Minuteman after the last superintendent selection. Now, as usual, I'm not going to comment on any of the public comments, but I might have something to say in November at our next meeting, our next regular meeting. Uh, that is the end of the public comments. Now we move on. Item four is a consent agenda, and my understanding, Julie, is it correct that we do not have minutes?
That is correct.
Okay, so the consent agenda of, uh, will be as written in the agenda without uh the draft minutes. We'll handle those next meeting. So the items on the consent agenda are approval of the list of monthly donations, approval of list of monthly, monthly grants, and approval of surplus property. So could I have a motion to accept the items in the consent agenda as written in our agenda with the exception of the draft minutes of September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very well, then we move to a roll call voice. Vote, voice, vote. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve is muted magically again, as is Charlene for some reason.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas, yes.
Great. Do we have any items for the good of the organization tonight? Okay, as I said, I have no comments for this evening, but I will possibly for November. Principals report, Katie Bouchard. Take it away, Katie.
Thanks. Um, so I just wanted to start tonight by welcoming some of our students on tonight's call. Um, so Minuteman has uh two student representatives that will serve um for our school committee kind of reports. Um, it is River Arujo, who is on the class of two thousand and twenty-four. I don't know if River is on. Um, River, are you on?
I'm here.
Oh, great. So River, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Uh, welcome, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm in my car. I wanted to find a quiet spot. Um, my name is River Arujo. I'm a senior in engineering uh from Acton, and something I'm looking forward to this year is getting my senior project done. And yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you, River. Um, and our, our next student rep is Riley Truesdale, so I'll let Riley introduce herself.
Uh, hi, I'm Riley Truesdale. I can't tell if my camera's working or not.
Not on.
It's not working.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, my name's Riley Truesdale. I'm a junior in animal science, and I'm from Waltham. One thing I'm looking forward to this year is my first ever prom. And I'm also class president, so I'm really looking forward to having more student activities and really helping students get involved and bringing the school closer together. Thank you.
Thanks, Riley. Um, so River and Riley um will be presenting at the regular school committee meeting, so they'll be giving us a student report on student life and some happenings at Minuteman uh starting in November. Uh, so I just wanted to have them uh come on tonight to introduce themselves. Um, we're excited for them to help us um kind of communicate uh some of the great things going on at Minuteman right now. Um, in just a few minutes, we'll also hear from Cam French and George O'Brien, who are two environmental students, and they'll be reporting out on their trip to Star Island. Um, just before that, we have a couple of things to just cover. Um, I would like to seek approval of the revised school calendar. Um, so we had some inconsistencies with some eleven twenty-one early dismissals and some when before vacation breaks. Uh, we would like to add the last day of school as an early dismissal. Um, and then we had some format changes due to MCAS and accommodation, accommodating those testing days. Um, so we're looking to get that approved.
We have a motion?
Yes, I'm moved.
Any discussion on the revisions as per the calendar in our packet, which are basically technical and MCAS related? Very well, then, come to a vote. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas, yes.
Okay, next.
Great. Uh, then we're also seeking approval for uh Minuteman's school council. Uh, we need approval of our process in order to form our school council, which was provided in your packets.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I have a question, um, and then we'll take more questions. How is this process different from the process of previous years? It was very well described in the packet, by the way, very clear. Is it different than how we've uh managed this in previous years, or is it pretty much the same process?
Um, it's, it's just by buttoning up the process we had. So we did have representatives from some of those groups on the committee, uh, but it wasn't necessarily formed in the way of, you know, I didn't get that the teachers weren't chosen by the teachers. The teachers were chosen by administration previously, for example. So it's the same makeup of the group. It's just a little bit different process in the formation of it.
Okay. Any other questions? Alice, and then Ford.
Um, is there an optimal time of year to hear from the school council regarding the budget? I, just because our budget is such a condensed, compacted timeframe. Um, and the school council reports to the school committee periodically, I think. Hmm. Or they're supposed to, and um I just wondered about the timing, like what's the best timing for that?
Sure. Um, you know, I think it's tricky at the beginning of the year because there's so much going on, and we're just forming the school council right now. So with budget stuff coming out within the next week or two, it might be a little too fast of a turnaround right now. Um, but you know, that being said, um, you know, depending on when the group is formed, I don't know if there'd be a better time at the end of the year, just so we can kind of have time to gather and, you know, go over the budget together. I think at this point right now, we'd just be forcing it if we tried to report out on the budget now within the timeframe.
Yep.
Ford?
Um, I'm not really aware in the last five, six years, whatever, of the school council being active. Has it been active at Minuteman?
Uh, we have had a school council um here and there, certainly with the move with COVID and everything else going on. It just hasn't been meeting as frequently.
Because about thirty years ago, I served in a school council in my hometown. I remember we had frequent meetings and, and actually it got me interested in education. So um I think it's very valuable um and to keep it going, and they have an important role. So I'm delighted to see it happening.
Yep.
And the other questions for the motion on the table. Erica?
Um, yeah, I just had a question. Um, how are the representatives appointed and elected yearly, or are the terms longer than a year, you know? So if you read all the stuff that they put out about the school councils, they say that they're silent on that issue, so kind of leaving it up to the co-chair, one of which being the principal, of whether or not they want to extend it longer than a year. I would start with the year, see how it goes from there, and then possibly offer extensions. Thank you.
And we have Sharon.
Katie, would it make sense, moving forward, to appoint the members of the council for the following year, like in the spring, so that we can hit the ground running in September?
Yep, definitely. I think it'd be best to have, um, you know, it'd be great if we have just got everything set up in, you know, the spring for the following uh school year, but you know, we do the best we can.
Any additional questions? Very well, then, roll call vote. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas, yes.
Okay.
Um, so some just quick updates and some stuff on back to school night. So we hosted our back to school night uh last Thursday on uh, for a couple Thursdays ago now, September twenty-eighth, um, six eight. Uh, we had decent turnout. Uh, it was for our freshman parents. Um, and what they do for the night is they uh live a day in their student shoes, so they go around, follow their academic schedules. Um, so we have them racing around the building, um, about every ten minutes, switching class to class. Um, but it went well. Um, the staff is always fantastic, greeting the families, you know. Parents always leave big smiles on their faces, thanking us and saying that they had a great evening. Um, so it went really well. Um, we have parent teacher conferences coming up in another week or two, uh, just getting families re-acclimated to Minuteman. Um, and then just some upcoming events, just school-wide. We have parent teacher conferences on the nineteenth. Uh, we have an early dismissal on the twentieth. We have our homecoming dance also on the twentieth. Um, we have another early dismissal on the twenty-fifth for professional development. Uh, we have Minuteman's Hall of Fame on November third, and then we have uh the Battle Green Rock, which is a fundraiser uh scholarship uh where we partner with the MPA on Sunday, November fourth. Um, so those are just some upcoming events and just a quick summary on the back to school night. Um, any questions on that before I get into our student report? Sure.
Ford?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but, and I think I know who's doing it. But the social media reports on Minuteman have been much improved. They're, they're excellent. And it's a great way, school committee, to keep a praise of what's going on. It's, it's, it's very good this year, and I, I have, I've appreciated it. And athletic teams are doing great and, and schools, so it's good. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Erin Norrisen has been um working with all of our social media accounts, Twitter and et cetera. So she's been doing a fantastic job, bringing us out of the dark, uh, enlightening people on what's going on.
Any other questions so far? None. Oh, you're so, your explanations are so clear. We don't even have any questions, so just, you're on a roll, keep going.
Great. Um, so next up, I'm gonna have, see if I can do, Julie, can you allow me to share my screen?
I'll say Kay.
Great, thank you.
That works for me for some reason.
Um, so I'm gonna invite uh George O'Brien um to share with us, uh, Environmental took a trip out to Star Island. Uh, and they're gonna tell us about their trip. So George, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so sorry, I was muted, my bad.
No worries.
So yeah, so we went on this really nice, really honestly pretty enjoyable, you know, nice long star and trip. So there was three days total, right, sixteen kids with three adults. Those chaperones. Um, and we, it was, and it was relatively remote, right? We got, we're seven miles from the mainland out there. It's an hour boat ride off from Rye. Um, but it's a really interesting area for environmental purposes because it's like a self-sustaining sort of system, right? They don't have any water or electrical supplies or like running from the mainland, right? All of it's generated on island and used on island. They have very eco-friendly systems, right? A lot of good, good stuff for us to research for environmental. The general schedule ended up being like work from eight to four, right? Lots of time to work environmental, and then like four to nine in the evening was like more time to, you know, bond and form friendships and stuff. It was, it was really good for that, as well as, you know, learning lots and lots of, you know, u- useful stuff. So we did lots of different hands-on stuff, right? We, we could look around the edge of the island at stuff. We had five main like topics or like areas we focused on, right? History and culture of the island. The island has all these like libraries and interesting things that we, we could learn about. The marine ecosystem, we learned about the geology, we had, well, the geology was everything, but we learned a lot about geology from various stuff. We looked at the native species and invasive species, and we looked at the islands like ecosystem services, right? Their programs that were helping with stuff, their programs that were doing things. And as part of those programs, we worked with, with them for um the two service projects that we did up the island to help with their work. One was clearing an invasive species that's knotweed, which was difficult, but was, you know, helpful. And the other one was, and both of these are depicted in the image, and the other one was a re-meadow-ing a grass area by pulling up roots of a previously removed invasive. So a lot of cool stuff.
Great, thank you, George, appreciate it. Um, and then the next page, uh, Cam French is gonna tell us about this.
Hi, so for our final project, um, for Star Island, we created um an Arc GIS story map. So basically with the story map, you can click on different parts of the island, um, depicted in the right photo with those little red dots, and it'll bring you through all of, um, depending on the, um, subject for each story map. Mine was environmental services, like up here on the screen. So each dot showed which environmental service was offered, what the purpose was, how it helped with sustainability, how it kept the island running. And um I think some other subjects included geology, just, um, how the island came to be, like history, and I had a lot of fun with this project, actually, and um I really enjoyed going on Star Island a lot. And I think that if they were to go back in future years, a lot of other students would have fun too. And I'm glad that we got to bond with the sophomores because, like, as a senior, I don't see them too much around shop. So it was nice to get to know them a lot better and become closer with my shopmates, even ones that are in my year. And it helped kind of with COVID for me. I kind of felt like there was like a piece missing in my freshman year, and I feel like this was the piece of the puzzle that kind of all fitted together, and my shop really felt like a family after that.
Great. Thank you, Cam, appreciate it. Um, any questions uh for the students on the trip?
Where is Star Island? I didn't quite catch that.
Oh, uh, it's seven miles off the coast. Uh, it's near Rye. It's the closest location. It's actually directly on the, it's right on the, I think, New Hampshire edge of the New Hampshire Maine border. So we could actually see other islands next to it that were in Maine.
I see. I spend a lot of time in Maine. Maybe I'll take a hitch over, look nice.
Bop over, yeah. It's, it's a cool place.
Other questions? Great.
Megan, I just want to thank um Dr. Cameron Scottwall, who um, you know, helped come near that trip and just, you know, plan it, dedicate some extra time. Of course, they're there outside of school hours uh with the students, and from what I hear, it was well worth it. So again, thank you to our staff uh for making that trip happen. Uh, and then just lastly, uh, for my report, uh, just I met with the MPA. Um, I had a meeting on October third. Um, it was a Zoom meeting. Um, we had approximately thirty-ish parents um in attendance. Uh, parents submitted questions ahead of time. Um, I probably answered anywhere between like ten to twelve questions, um, ranging from bussing to vending machines to curriculum. Um, so it's a good mix of questions. Um, I was happy to attend, you know, if they'd like to have me back um some other night later in the year, you know, I can make sure that I can visit again. Uh, so it went over well. Um, just any quick questions on the MPA?
Let's start with Pam.
Um, my question is how the MPA and the CPAC work together and, you know, are there a similar um opportunity for the CPAC? Um, so, and, and just, you know, basically how the two parent groups some interact?
I know that our special education director um met with the CPAC uh parents earlier in the year. Um, so they do have a similar, um, you know, kind of method of, you know, parents that are interested and want to learn more. There's an administrator that kind of oversees that group, and they work with the parents. How much the CPAC works with the MTA without us involved is, I don't know. If I haven't been there. So if they are uh conversing on the outside, uh, that's great. I just don't know about it.
Hey, and Sharon, was your hand up, I think?
It was. Um, I can actually answer Pam's question too. So Pam, uh, the CPAC and the MPA are some of the, one of the officers of the Parents Association is actually the co-chair of the CPAC. So we do try to put a, um, and I'm also on the CPAC. Um, so we do try to have an update on CPAC during the uh MPA meetings as well. Um, but I just wanted to publicly um commend Katie for an excellent presentation at the MPA meeting last week. I thought it was um so informative, and it was very clear that you had taken into account all of the feedback you received from parents prior to the meeting, and it gave a fabulous PowerPoint presentation with all of the answers to the questions, and you were very, um, very open to additional questions that may have come up, and I just thought it was an excellent presentation. So I just wanted to formally um congratulate you on a job well done.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Erica? Erica is on mute. There she goes.
Yeah, yeah, so um I just was wondering, is this something that you're planning to do periodically? To, or yearly or something like that? Katie? To meet with the MPA? Yeah, um, so we, uh, I had met with some of the officers of the MPA um right at the very, very beginning of the school year, and they had asked me if I wanted to come to a meeting, just happy to do. Um, so if they'd like to have me back, um, you know, later in the year, I can definitely do that, jump in on another meeting.
And the other questions? And is that the end of the um report?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Moving on to everybody's favorite topic, finance.
Well, I don't have much to say tonight, Mr. Chair, but uh we, we did have a, a, a finance committee meeting last Monday, primarily approved the payable warrant, but uh we are now just about commencing the budget year for FY twenty-five. That number really scares the heck out of me. But any rate, uh, I believe that, uh, that budget workbooks, et cetera, are going out to uh ex- executive uh um team and, and uh team leaders and things like that. Um, and I believe they're due October sixteenth. Uh, on November sixth, uh, the finance committee will have a uh uh first look at, at the initial draft of the budget uh presented by the superintendent and the, and the E-team. And then pretty much, you know, we're gonna be in December looking at a lot of numbers and uh hopefully be seeing the very last superintendent recommended budget on January eighth. And then, you know, we're off to public hearings and off to town meetings. And that's my report.
Eve, I'm wondering, have we sent the um tentative uh budget calendar to the full membership? We might want to do that, even though it's.
Yeah, we can do that, no problem.
So they can get an idea of how tight this process is. Now, the, the finance uh subcommittee is gonna be very, very busy starting the beginning of November. And you will have a number of opportunities to see the budget as it evolves before we have to take a vote on it. But we have a um shorter than we would like process because the towns need to hear from us in order to do their budget. So one of the uh significant challenges we have is we don't really know how much money we're getting from the state when we put our budget together. So there's some educated guesswork that goes into it. So it's a challenging job. Um, and you can hear a lot more about it, and I think it would be good to send everybody that calendar so they get some idea of when each event is gonna happen.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Kevin Mahoney?
Yeah, so be, uh, regarding the budget calendar, we, we have amended it a little bit to extend it. Um, we have met with the administrative team on what we eh expect to prioritize this fiscal year. Um, instructions will be going out uh tomorrow. Um, it'll, the due date will be a little further into uh the end of Novem- uh, October. Uh, in the uh finance subcommittee, we'll be talking about that at the, uh, at the next meeting.
So, so Kevin, could you send that revised agenda, our uh timetable out? Cause I, I have not seen it. I was working off an old one.
Yep, no, Steve, we, we've been, it's been a little bit in process over the last week, so we'll make sure we get that out. Yep.
Okay, Ford, was your hand up, or were you just waving?
It was. I, I only have the contacts in two towns, Jeff, you know what they are. And I think this is gonna be a really tough budget year and, and for the towns. So I think the more that the school committee knows and the school committee members can be um talking to their finance committee and their, their leaders as we move along, I think that's gonna be extremely important. Um, because I think there's gonna be a, could be a lot of questions asked.
And the other comments? Very well, then, thank you, uh, Steve and Kevin. Thank you for the update. And um, once that's a little bit more finalized, please send it out to the memberships, so we'll all be on the same page.
Sure do.
Um, and that's a good segue into the acting superintendent's report, Kevin Mahoney. And that's a good segue into the acting superintendent's report, Kevin Mahoney.
Yes, thank you. Enclosed in your packet is the the October one report. As we have over the past few years, we provided sort of a historical analysis over the last three years enrollment. Our preliminary October one enrollment will will need to be certified by DESE, but our preliminary numbers are showing in this school year, six hundred and eighty-six students attending, of which six hundred and forty-nine are member town students and thirty are non-member, thirty-seven non-member town students. As you can see by the chart, the in district enrollment has been trending upward over the last few years. By way of comparison, we had six hundred and ten member students versus eighty non-member town students. So we have been seeing that trend for more member town students enrolled. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
My question would be, on our October one number, how good a job did we do estimating that? At the end of last, kind of at the, when we were doing the enrollment and deciding how many students to let in? How close to our guesstimate are we? Did we actually reach? How close were we?
Well, from what I, what I understand, we were expecting, we did accept in excess of seven hundred. It was closer to seven twenty. We always in Anthony's on the, at the meeting as well, he may correct any numbers I I may have off, but essentially, we did have about, you know, seven hundred and twenty or so students that were were enrolled at the beginning of the year. We always do tend to see some slippage in that enrollment as students change their mind as the school year approaches or for one reason or other decide to go back to their 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 local district school system. So I think we were at a point now where it's fairly close to where it was last year, between six ninety total enrollment and six hundred and eighty-six. So I think we landed in a spot now that we we're trying to manage. We'll be meeting with the subcommittee on enrollment and capacity and membership next week because I want to we want to have a conversation with the subcommittee on where we should see our enrollment trending moving forward so that we can sufficiently have the space and capacity both on the, in the classroom side and more importantly, on the classroom side, much, not so much on the vocational technical areas, so that we're accommodating a student, a student body, a student enrollment that we can provide adequate space moving forward.
Thank you very much. Any other questions so far? No? Okay. Next item.
Yes, I'd like like Anthony Chirello, our director of teaching and learning, to review with you the MCAS report results.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Just going to share my screen here real quick. Bear with me for a second. So what do you guys see right now? Do you see the PowerPoint or the agenda for the school committee meeting?
PowerPoint.
All right, perfect. Okay. All right. So while I've given a similar presentation to the staff earlier this year, excuse me, and while this report is on MCAS, it is important to remember that we do not define ourselves simply by our MCAS scores. We have a unique school model that allows our students' individual strengths to really, you know, manifest their brilliance. So MCAS is a part of that. MCAS is the major metric for accountability by the state, for better or worse. But we continue to exceed expectations both for ourselves and against the state. So it's important for the school committee as well as the community to know how we've been performing on the MCAS. So if you are a subscriber to the Boston Globe, you will know of doom and gloom when it comes to the MCAS across the state with the worries around not returning to pre-pandemic levels. For Minuteman, first, we did not drop as a result of the pandemic due to the work of our staff and our students. And in this particular round of MCAS, we were one of sixty-six Massachusetts schools who were recognized for strong performance. We were one of eighteen high schools, and I think a great note for our vocational schools, not just Minuteman, but across the Commonwealth, is three of those eighteen recognized schools were vocational schools. So I just want to call that out to start. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So this is for those of you who are not steeped in MCAS history, so in twenty eighteen, the MCAS changed from what is known as the legacy MCAS to MCAS two point O. MCAS two point O is a far more rigorous test than the original MCAS. It is also computer-based. The standards covered on math were substantially different than in the legacy MCAS. ELA, not quite as much, but it was a different test for sure. And then the science MCAS went to MCAS two point O in twenty twenty-two, so later on. So for lots of schools across the Commonwealth in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so pre-pandemic, there were definitely drops in scores from the legacy MCAS. So it was that time period as all schools, including Minuteman, was working to figure out what was on the test, how to structure their scope and sequence, and how to best support students to be successful on that exam. So as you can see, in ELA, where the test was not quite as different, that we continue each year to grow. So anything that was accomplished that we're going to look at specifically for this year, that growth has been happening over time, right? So it's not like there was this giant jump in one year. It's been things that the Minuteman staff has been working on for years at this point, since that transition to MCAS two point O. The math, which was relatively stagnant in the first three years, and of course, twenty twenty is not on here as the MCAS was not given due to the pandemic. But we continue to adjust, to look at data, to see where we were struggling, where our students were struggling, what interventions we could add in, and then all of those things. Kind of those seeds that we sowed, really, we were able to reap those benefits here in the twenty twenty-three exam. And in science, again, growing first year of the new MCAS was twenty twenty-two, and now we're in our second year. So we had a chance to learn from those original results. So I apologize to the school committee. This particular slide was not in your packet. So this is, I did add this in because I think it's important not only to see how we've done against ourselves, but how we compare to the state. So you can see that we exceed the state in meeting and exceeding. So there's the students who in the, in the old legacy terms would have been proficient. We, you can see that we're above the state for students in exceeding expectations, for meeting expectations, obviously impartially and not meeting. We want to be below the state. Well, you know, the number's lower, but we're above the state in those categories as well. And it's not by a small margin, it's by a significant proportion. All right? And those are on all three of our exams. Now, I want to just tie this next piece of MCAS into our school-wide goals from last year. So our school-wide goals from last year were related to our high need students on the ELA and the math MCAS, looking for growth of five and four percent respectively. I'm going to call out really a bunch of different things, not just this growth with our high need students for all three of the MCAS exams. So the first is ELA. So ELA for overall, this is just all students, not just high need students. For overall meets and exceeding, we grew at five percent, which was, oh, I'll get to the overall in a second, which was seventy-nine percent of our students met or exceeded, which is fantastic. And then when we get to the 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 groups that we were targeting, which is our high need students. So remember, our goal was five percent or yeah, five percent growth for ELA. We saw a ten percent growth for our high need students on the ELA MCAS. For our special edu-, oh, sorry, for those of you who don't know, high need students are students who are either low income, students with disabilities, or English language learners, or a combination of those, but at least one of those three categories. But for the special education students, obviously, the the bulk of our high needs population is students receiving special education services, and we saw seventeen percent growth amongst that group. And then this is a cool one, little extra cool thing, I think, which is that top level, right? So that exceeds, we saw a we saw twenty-nine percent of our students who scored exceeds, right? So the highest that you can possibly score on the MCAS. So I just want to call out Greg Donovan, our ELA lead and all the teachers in the ELA department, as they really look hard at data, look at questions, look at how they're teaching different things. But we do literacy across the curriculum, right? So kids are reading no matter what program they're in. And we know that frankly, reading levels correspond most to MCAS scores, aside from socioeconomic where you, where you reside on that. So just a kudos to everyone on ELA for the continued success there. For math, this is really amazing, I would tell you. So overall, for students who scored meets and exceeds, again, the growth, sorry, we didn't have a specific goal here because we were looking at high need students explicitly for our our goal. But we saw a thirty-one percent increase in students scoring meets or exceeds. For our high need students, so all high needs, all students who fall into this category, we saw forty-eight, remember, the goal was four percent. We saw forty-eight percent growth amongst these students amongst our special education students receiving special education services. We saw a ninety-six percent growth in students scoring meets or exceeds. And then just student scoring exceeds. So that highest level, we also saw an extraordinary growth. These are all growth numbers here. So again, you know, to John Fusco, our math lead, the math department, math is in all of our CTE areas. So the, you know, the more students are doing that in those different real world, authentic environments, along with these different intervention classes that we offer to fill those gaps, especially a lot of our students come to us with significant gaps in their in math, and we work to fill those gaps as quickly as we can. As a result, and and again, we've been looking at this data for years in learning to support kids the best that we can. And I think our our teams are doing an amazing job. And then finally, excuse me, on science. So for science, overall meets and exceeds, we saw twenty-two percent growth amongst all of our students. Amongst our high need students, we saw a thirty percent growth of students scoring meets or exceeds. For our students receiving special education services, we saw a forty-five percent growth of students scoring meets and exceeds. And then again, looking at the just student scoring exceeds, we saw a hundred percent growth of students scoring exceeds, right? So and across the board, in Eric Marshall, who's our science lead and his team, you know, again, doing that same work that our our ELA and math departments are doing, which is every year looking at the tests, looking at the data, looking at the results. We look at it student by student because we know our students incredibly well, and we, you know, want to make sure that we are providing them with the best support that we can. And so as we move forward, you know, we continue to focus on literacy across the curriculum. We're reintroducing the Collins Writing Program, which is a consistent writing across both CTE and academics, which is why we use it. We continue to integrate our core academic classes with our CTE programs to make that traditional academic learning really come alive in a real world, authentic way. We continue with our targeted intervention. We have support classes in reading, we have support classes in math in both freshman and sophomore years that, you know, ensure that students are ready, not just for the MCAS, but to fill those gaps so that they could be successful both in their career programs and really anywhere they need to be. We continue to offer weekend and after-school help sessions as we get closer to those different MCAS tests that our staff are, you know, go above and beyond to to support. And taking that data-informed approach that I've mentioned several times, that all of our departments work really hard to learn from the previous assessments and, you know, make the adjustments to practice where necessary. Some of the groups that we continue, want to continue to focus on, in addition, you know, high needs in general, but low income students, if we, I sent you all in your packet, all of the data from MCAS broken down by subgroup, low income students, although the the total number is not high, it is, it is a group that has continued to struggle a little bit more than some of the other high need groups who fall under the high needs category. And then those students who are both, in some cases, maybe a multilingual learner and also reading, receiving special education status, might be a special education student who's also low income. But when you start multiplying the factors of the high needs category, those are some other students that we want to continue to focus our interventions and attention on and making sure that they're taking advantage of those supports that we have available to them. And then just continuing to focus on our tier one instruction, ensuring that, you know, all content is accessible to all students, you know, in that full inclusion classroom that we have. So that is the report on MCAS. Again, huge shout out to all of our teachers, our teacher leaders in all the work they've done with their teams, not just this year, but in really the past for forever, but I'm happy to take any questions.
I saw Pam's hand up.
Um, two things. One, I am just blown away. Congratulations. That is extraordinary. And you know, particularly the the focus and improvements for the high need students is just extraordinary. So I do want to just say congratulations. I have a question which might be more of a focus for a future meeting, and that's about the integration between the core academic and the CTE classes. For many, many years, we heard about this, talked about as the academy model, but particularly move, leading up to the move into the building, but have not heard as much about it since the move into the building. And maybe in a future meeting, I would love to hear more about how, you know, the approach to that integration and if it is still the academy model, and if not, if something else has replaced it.
Yeah, it's probably a longer conversation, Pam, but we can certainly dive into that in a future meeting. But it certainly, you'll see integration projects happening throughout the school, throughout the year, for sure, but.
Think a deeper report on that in the not-too-distant future would be appropriate. But not tonight. Ford, then Alice.
Yeah, I, Pam, you stole my thunder. I couldn't agree with you more. I think we need to hear a lot more about how we're implementing the academy model. I just think, I kind of think it's from our point of view, we haven't heard much about it in the last couple of years. So I think that's extremely important. Just congratulations to the faculty, the teachers, you do an amazing job and we all know that. And what the students and congratulations to the students because they're working hard, not only on they're working hard in their entire education. And I happen to believe MCAS are important. It's just a belief that I have, and some of you know that I was part of the original group that brought it forth. I had that opportunity. I think it's a good test that it proves that at Minuteman, it's working. It's just one more tool in that the teachers have, and teachers, you're doing a great job with it. So thank you.
Alice?
I'm just listening to that report and then previous reports from Principal Bouchard. I think there's an opportunity to incorporate all of this in updating the information about the school that goes out. I feel like there's a lot of good energy in these reports and I just, you know, sometimes the story of Minuteman, if people know it, but this is kind of like a step up even from what we know. So maybe it would be good to refresh some of the online materials or whatever materials we send out to highlight some of these, what I would call points of pride.
Erica? Erica's on mute.
Yeah, I am. Hi. Yes, thank you for that great report. I was just curious, when, when do you set the goals for the following year as far as growth goals? For specifically for MCAS and the different subject areas, ELA, math and science?
Yeah, so it's, it's honestly like a tricky, so because you're comparing. So we set that goal based on like kind of available data. The students who come to us who are going to take that test next year are not the same students who took the test the previous year, right? So we do, and and then the teachers will tell you this, but the eighth grade test is not a high stakes test versus the tenth grade test that is. So we can look at, which we do, the eighth So we can look at, which we do, the eighth grade data um of our current tenth graders. It's informative, but it's hard to really set. A definitive goal based on it. Uh, I know there was a lot of discussion on the. Both from the school committee, but internally as well on the last year's goals um in terms of the numbers specifically. Um, so I think we're always looking to improve. We're always looking to focus on as we look at the data. Um, groups who may have struggled, like like I said, the students who are I the uh low income students. Um, although even that terminology is getting trickier with free lunch and not having um. Uh, free and as many free and reduced lunch forms returned as they, that's a that's a problem across the Commonwealth, um, but. Um. That, so Erica, I'm not trying to skirt the question, but it's 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 really hard to set. Um. Especially when you're doing particularly pretty well with the MCAS, like for the growth goal. So you really want to look at areas of um. Like I said, like different demographics that may have struggled um on the previous couple of tests. Um. So that's kind of where where that is. But like schoolwide goals are hopefully will be presented at the, I don't know, I won't speak for anyone. But I think in the, probably the next school committee meeting.
Uh, Sharon.
Yeah, I just want to say as a current parent and of a junior who. I was holding my breath as I read those scores and there was a lot of very happy families last last week when we got our scores. So there's a lot of teachers on this call and I just want to say thank you because the work that you all put in to help. Our students who have not previously seen success with MCAS was very well noted. And so congratulations to all of you and thank you.
And is a um, uh, an observation. Two observations. The first observation is. A lot of schools have had um results in the other direction. Post COVID, right? You know that that that's the big news story that um a lot of schools have not caught up and have declined post COVID. That makes the result even more impressive. And I think uh, this is an observation, I could be wrong. But uh, as a public school teacher at the time, I got to see how um. Um, uh Newton South handled. Uh, teaching during COVID. And I talked to people at other schools about how they handle teaching during COVID. I saw how the staff here handled teaching during COVID. And it was clear to me that the people who were handling it best. Were the ones here. Made far better decisions um from my viewpoint, from what I could see. On how to handle education during the worst of COVID, the better decisions were made here. And I would imagine that that has something to do. Uh, with these results, the decisions made a few years ago between the staff here and the administration here. I think were, in retrospect, and even at the time, much wiser than I would have saw. Um, at many other schools. Okay, Ford, did you have a file comment on that?
The only thing is, I I want to follow up on a couple of things. Perception is reality, and I think it's very important that. This kind of information, not just on MCAS, but on the other things that go on a Minuteman from an education point of view. Get out to our communities prior to the budget season. I think that's imperative. And I think at the same time you're doing that. We still have to keep our eye on the ball on admissions and and keep that flow coming. Um, the education, it's all about education, and I think our communities need to know this because. I think a lot of people still have a distorted value of 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 vocational education and. I think this kind of information and other things that we do are important. And I think that's only going to enhance Minuteman beyond what it's already enhanced to, so. Uh, the more we can get out, the better and then more repetitive, keeping being repetitive is important. So I think it'd be good if we also had reports on some of our follow up. Uh, rec- suggestions, whether they're, if they're not good, then tell us, but some of our suggestions, we have a follow up on that. Sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with um MCAS for this very impressive report. And I, it was a very clear report, so thank you for that. Not a lot of slides, but a lot of information that was clearly presented. So thank you for that, Anthony. Very good. Moving on to. Uh, approval of the admission policy and slide allocation formula for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
This is uh, this is required uh as a vote of the school committee. I believe the uh policy subcommittee uh reviewed this as well. Um, seeking a vote to uh approve.
Now, this is the same as last year's, is that correct? The same um?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, so uh, this, uh, so the. The both the admission policy and the um slide allocation formula are a big deal. And they can be very controversial. Uh. Last year's worked for us quite well. So we're pretty much repeating the same, more or less, except the percentages have changed because the percentages and slot allocation. Are determined partly by historic enrollments. That, I think that is correct. So those has changed, but the philosophy behind it has not changed. Now, probably in the not too distant future. We're going to have to, you know, spend more time looking at it again in detail as a entire committee. But for this year, the recommendation is to. Move ahead with our. Prior admission policy, which again could be, uh, could be changed by things having this happening at the state level, by the way. And our current strategy for um slide allocation. So that is the um recommendation. And I would like somebody. Uh, to make a motion to approve the admission policy and slot allocation formula for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. By the second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Alice.
I believe that it is in compliance with the current uh DUCI rules.
Pam.
I I I just want to confirm that for both the policy. And if that there were no changes in either the policy or the slot allocation formula, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Thank you.
But the percentages did change.
Right, but.
The formula itself, right.
Formulas. The formula didn't change, but the percentage.
Right.
That's right.
Just a point of clarification. So the policy subcommittee did not actually um. Check back and forth. We um between last year's written document and the current document or the slot allocation formula, we were. Voting on that there were no changes. So that is what we approved. And um, when we approved recommending it to the full school committee. And for the newer members, um, you should understand about the slot allocation formula, um, that what we're trying to do here. Or have been trying to do is to make sure that every member town, all of the member towns are paying for the school building. Every year, uh, every member town gets some seats at the school. Um, and this particular allocation formula makes sure that there's nobody, no town that doesn't get a shot at getting kids into school. At some level, you know, it's kind of a minimum level. It's not a. Quote a system, it's just at least these many kids are going to get in.
Any further questions or comments on the motion on the table? Very well then, bring it to a vote, starting with Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matzky Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Ford's folding Dover, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alse Lucas Joe, yes.
Very good. Uh, the sub first subcommittee report is going to be on the superintendent search process and. I have a pre-comment before I turn it over to Pam. This might get a little confusing because due to timing issues beyond our control. We have two processes going on at the same time. The first is a search for an interim superintendent for the period late October through the end of June. The second is a search for our permanent superintendent, which we would hope. Would start at the beginning of July. Now, these two processes are going to be done extremely diff- differently. So when you hear about the process for the interim superintendent, which is primarily is going to be all done with by the school committee. It's a completely different process than the one for the permanent superintendent. So, keep that in mind. Two completely different processes. One is going to move very fast and be over hopefully very soon. The other is going to be going on for a while and is going to have a lot of outside participation in it. So just keep two different processes, completely different. Don't have anything to do with each other, except for Pam's going to talk about both. Okay, Pam.
Um, thank you, Jeff. I'm mainly tonight talking about the interim search. Uh, or the search for an interim superintendent and Jeff kind of said what I wanted to start with. The it's a, this is going to be a truncated process, very, very different from the full search. Where we will be having lots, opportunities for lots and lots of input. So for the interim, you know, we are required to do a search process. Um, on September twenty-ninth, the school committee approved to um a posting. That posting is required to be up for for two weeks. And our goal is to be able to have someone in place within about two weeks from. Where we are right now. So it's going to be moving extremely fast. So the, what the committee would like to suggest to the school committee is um. Sort of a a timeline as follows and that um. That the subcommittee will be meeting on Wednesday of this week on the twelfth to develop. Questions for an interim superintendent as well as the criteria for evaluating the. Um, superintendent candidates. You know, we invite you to um send potential. Um, questions or criteria to Julia. We ask you to do it by the end of the day tomorrow. Because we are going to be meeting then on Wednesday. Because we need to leave the um, uh, the posting open for two weeks. That brings us through the end of this week. So the subcommittee is going to be meeting on the sixteenth. To be uh reviewing the applications. We will be meeting during the day on the seventeenth. And then we are um suggesting a school committee meeting on the evening of the seventeenth. To both interview um a finalist. To be making a decision on the interim superintendent. And then in an executive session to be going into contract negotiation. So we're basically talking about a process within a week. In order to be able to um, you know, to have that interim superintendent in place. You know, our goal is to have the interim superintendent in place by the twenty-third and certainly by the end of this month. So I think what we, what the, we would like is a motion. Um, to approve an interim search process and timeline and then to have discussion if that is okay with you as Chair Jeff.
So you would like a motion to approve the. Uh, interim processes timeline as you've just outlined it, is that correct?
That's right.
Who would like to make that motion? Second, very good, discussion. Uh, here's it, it sounds great to me. I know what the timeframe needs to be and um, there's a lot of work involved. And we really have to get this done fast. So, yeah, great. Sharon.
Pam, I'm just confirming, you guys are meeting on Thursday to go over this because you you kept saying Wednesday, but then you said you needed it by the end of day tomorrow. So I just want to confirm.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I don't know what day of the week it is today. We. We are meeting tomorrow evening, so we need, it let me clarify that. I'm so glad you asked that question. I was thinking it was still Monday. It obviously isn't. Today is Tuesday. I'm just pulling up my calendar to make sure that. Oh, you're right. We're meeting on Thursday, the twelfth.
Okay, I just want to check, yeah.
But you want your comments, any comments by.
By tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
By end of the day.
On Thursday.
That's right.
Right.
Uh, Ford.
Uh, Pam, am I correct that this is a prescribed process due to state regulations and how we need to do this? We're not making it totally up.
Parts of it are prescribed, that we go through a process that we have, our posting up for two weeks. Are all part of the state regulations.
Correct. So we're following a state regulation uh basically to uh meet the objectives that. We will have.
That's right.
Yep.
Further questions for the motion on the table? Very well then, bring it to a vote, starting with Pam again.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matzky Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Ford's folding Dover, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alse Lucas Joe, yes.
Very good. Now, more superintendent search.
More superintendent search. So the um, the search committee, by the way, which consists. Of um Alice De Luca, Charlene Cabral and myself at the moment. Let me just say at the moment. Um. Um, will be, you know, our first priority is to be um, you know, conducting the interim search process. But we also have been charged by the school committee to come back at our November meeting. You know, if not before, between now and our November meeting. With a recommendation for a timeline and process for um the um search for a more permanent. Um superintendent. So um, the committee is working on that as well. And we will have something to present at the November meeting. Um. One of the first steps, you know, that we have learned, you know, through our experience is thinking about a search. Um, could um, a search consultant firm to be working with us and particularly to be helping. With ensuring that we're complying with all the state regulations, um, doing all the necessary pieces. Um, and um, helping get the word out. Um. This school committee has done significant work in looking at search firms, you know, over the last. Four years or so, starting in two thousand nineteen, there was a strategic planning. Committee that interviewed a number of search firms to, you know, get a sense of. You know, what search firms, you know, both national firms as well as local firms. Um, you know, were had experience in doing searches for vocational schools. Um, uh, for our last search, we underwent an RFP process. And um, you know, developing the criteria for a search firm. Interviewing um the search firms that had responded. And based on that, the search firm that responded that had the most experience with vocational schools was. Um, the Mass Association of School Committees, MASC. We entered into a contract with them and part of their contract said that if the superintendent. Did not um stay, you know, at Minuteman for two years. That they would engage a um, another. Search for us free of charge. And, you know, based on the contract and based on the fact that, you know, through the. Experience that this um, uh, school committee had in looking at other search firms and especially those with. Vocational um experience, that we would like to recommend um that. We move forward with exploring an extension of the contract. we move forward with exploring an extension of the contract with MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees for this coming search.
Are you looking for a vote for that?
Yes, I am.
Do we have a motion to accept? Ford, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so this is to reengage with MASC to negotiate a reengagement with a MASC at no cost. To move ahead and to do our next superintendent search. And that's what the vote is for. Let's start with Steve.
Well, I, I think your ahah may have answered my question. My question was, has MASC any discussion taken place with them about their obligation to do another search?
Yes. And they confirm that they are obligated to do a search if we choose to work with them.
Okay, thank you.
Alice?
I don't think it's truly no cost. I think that there are incidental expenses that you pay. The bulk fee is not repeated. So that's something in the order of $10,000 that we don't pay. But there are certainly some incidental costs relating to advertising or whatever. They do a lot of advertising that we would incur. I don't think it's a lot of money.
But they're, they're expense. We don't pay them. We pay for the
We pay the expense.
That's what I wanted to point out. I just wanted to be clear and transparent that it wasn't absolutely free. There were expenses.
Ford?
I've heard some people say, well, MASC doesn't have a, a strong representation or knowledge of vocational administrators and be that as it may, they're really going to, I believe, work with us on the process. I think the committee, when it's formed, needs to reach out, much the same way we did before, but even more extensively to have contacts with people in the vocational world, not only in Massachusetts, but outside of Massachusetts. And I think if we do that, I think that might, might help the search. I think it's gonna be an extremely difficult search, is my own opinion, given lots of circumstances. But I think I think having MASC help us with the process is important, but it's important for the committee and it'll be an expanded committee to understand how to reach out well beyond, perhaps even well beyond what we did last time. I also, I think there'll be some discussion, but just so people know, we started the process of a superintendent search and figuring it out back in 2018 for the search that we had. So this was a long, long process. And if we're looking at in July, that's a very short truncated process. I caution us, that may be a real challenge to get to that. Just throwing it out. But I think the right move is to hire MASC to help us with the process in the beginning.
Yes, there's no guarantee that this first time is gonna result in a new superintendent. So for all the reasons that Ford mentioned, the pool of superintendents for many reasons has dwindled over the year and the pool of of vocational superintendents is even smaller. So there are no guarantees, but I'll tell you, I'll tell you what it depends on the most, in my view. Who happens to be looking at the time that you're doing your search? And how they perceive you as a place that they would like to work. But a lot of it is the random luck of who happens to be looking at the time. And it doesn't matter how great a job you do in a search. If the people you want don't happen to be looking and there aren't a lot of them, then you're out of luck. I see some other hands up. Sharon?
Yeah. You hear me? Because it just told me that I was Okay. Well, I just got a thing on my screen saying your microphone is not set up. I'm like, okay, that's weird. I just wanted to clarify what you were saying, Pam, because I do know that within, within the community, what I've heard from some is that they're concerned that if we follow the exact same process we followed last time, that there could be some non-positive outcomes. So I just wanted to clarify, as you were saying, that this hiring of MASC is, is just, sorry, MASC, is that they're kind of guiding us through the process, but ultimately it will be the, the full expanded search committee, which will include faculty and families and school committee members. They will be making the decision on the candidates as far as reviewing the candidates. Is that correct?
The, the search consult, it is our, it, it is Minuteman's process. So the, the search consultant ensures that we are doing all of the pieces that, you know, we are obligated to do. The search consultant helps us with the outreach, but it is our process. We're the ones who set up the committee. The committee are the ones who, the search committee are the ones who interview candidates and make recommendations for finalists to the school committee. You're absolutely right about that.
I just wanted you to clarify that for the community at large that was listening, so thank you.
And just as an update, on November 4, our November, by now November meeting, they're gonna have a detailed process to describe to us. So they're not doing that yet. But they are gonna present it for approval in November. Then you'll see the whole thing later. Alice?
Just to, you know, I'm, I'm always looking back and forwards at the same time. It's a curse and a blessing. But anyway, the previous search committee was in the same, in the same way, a small group of school committee members. Then there was an expanded search committee that it was 12 or 13 people, including staff, including parents, including someone from the workforce development board, including that is in this area. Someone from the advisory committees. It was a large group of people. And it was very carefully balanced to include both an, an equal number of men and women, for example. There was a lot of thought that went into that and it wasn't, it took weeks to, to do that. So when Ford said, you know, this, this is a quick process, a, a short timeframe, you know, looking back over what we did, it really does take a lot of time to get a bunch of people to agree to do something like this. It takes a lot of people's time out of their evenings. And that, that little group of 12 or 13 people, you know, they go through and interview people. That takes a couple hours, each person review all their materials and so forth, and they make a recommendation of some kind of unranked list of candidates to the school committee for the final decision. But what we're looking at right now is the MASC consultant is really a kind of an operational guide to make sure that we don't violate any of the state laws, any of the DUCI regulations and some ruling of the Wamuth Board of whatever from, there, there is the Wamuth ruling. So, you know, you have to just make sure you do all these things and we don't, none of us know what all those things are, but they do. And also they have access to, you know, putting out the national advertisements that you want to see. Minuteman doesn't have that set up to do as a regular part of their business. So this is an operational consultant that just makes sure we do what we're supposed to do in order.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, they, they don't run the process, they advise us. The search committee are the ones who run the process.
Further comments or questions from the motion on the table? Very well then, bring it to a vote. Pam?
Pam Norsakton, yes.
Sarah Matikou Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alstel Lucas Joe, yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Search Committee for doing all the work required in a very short period of time to deal with our very challenging timeframe. And you're gonna have a very busy week coming up and we appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll see you all on the 17th.
Yes, we do have another meeting on the 17th. It's gonna be a targeted meeting to deal with, as far as I know now, just superintendent search, so targeted meeting, hopefully not too long, we'll see. Very good. Policy Subcommittee Alice DeLuca.
Okay, this is the last page in your packet. Number of years ago, 2011, so that's pretty much at the beginning of the iPhone. The school committee approved meeting norms. And, and the old school building, these were posted on the wall of the school committee meetings so that everybody was reminded of them periodically if they wanted to look at them. And Policy Subcommittee is currently working on the September policy recommendations from MASC, which is a three-tile now headache. But the, what we would like you to look at now is the draft norms, which is this, the second section of that. We'd like to, if possible, get a motion to approve draft 2023 norms and technology guidelines that would apply to both in-person and virtual meetings and executive sessions. So we would try to adhere to these for all of our meetings. So, you know, that's, that's what we're proposing as just a first pass. It's something to, to do as a group to guarantee that our meetings are the way we want them to be. So if there's anyone who would, who feels that they want to make a motion to accept the draft norms and draft technology guidelines for 2023 as presented.
I move that we adopt the 2020, the draft 2023 norms and technology guidelines as presented.
I have two comments. The first is this is typo under technology guidelines. Should it be members will not use video and audio except in extenuating circumstances? The first point.
Why would you not have video and audio?
To be courteous to each other and to the public, members will use video and audio except, so what do you mean by that statement?
Turn on your video, turn on your audio.
Oh, so we will turn on our video. Okay, got it. Great.
We can clarify that.
Right. The other one is, I don't know, it's kind of an opinion here. When you, on draft 2023 norms, one, two, three, the fifth item, each person will be able to speak uninterrupted. Now, their ability to speak uninterrupted is not complete, right? Because sometimes you're not allowed to speak and sometimes you have a time limit on how much you can speak. So I'm just wondering if you should have the word as appropriate added to that to dis, to eliminate the possible ambiguity of what it's saying. Because I know what your intent is. I'm just wondering if you need to have that there or not. Okay. Otherwise, I'm fine with these. Do we need a motion to amend? Or can we just accept it as amended in our our
So the amendment, amendments would be each person will be able to speak uninterrupted as appropriate?
Yes.
And then the first sentence of the technology would be to turn on video and audio?
Are there any objections to having the motion revised to include those items? No, very well then. And the other further discussion of the school committee accepting these as our meeting norms for 2023. Very well then, bring it to a vote, starting with Pam?
Pam Norsakton, yes.
Sarah Matikou Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alstel Lucas Joe, yes. Thank you.
Now, I know that you're all very disappointed that we are not going to go into an executive session, so I don't want to see any tears shed, but could I please have a motion to adjourn instead?
Second.
Pam?
Pam Norsakton, yes.
Sarah Matikou Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alstel Lucas Joe, yes.
Thank you, school committee members. I will see you, thanks to your vote, in one week for a abbreviated, hopefully, targeted school committee meeting. Thank you to all our visitors, commenters, and I will see you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you.